We'll bring our regular city council meeting to order. It's Monday, August 20th, 2012, 7:00 PM. If there's anyone present who may require special assistance to participate in this public meeting, please let us know and we'll try to assist you. Roll call?
Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Fauch?
Here.
Councilmember LeBeever?
Here.
Councilmember Crum?
Here.
And Mayor Fetter?
Here.
Are there any additions or deletions to the county's agenda?
Make the motion to approve the agenda? Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilmember LeBeever?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Fauch?
Aye.
And Councilmember Crum?
Aye.
Tonight's agenda is then approved. Agenda item number five is going to public hearing on the employee termination for the request of Angela Winter. Angela, if you want to come up here.
Do you want me to stand or what do you want me to?
If you want one of the mics, I'm sure everyone can hear you.
I just have an opening statement. I asked for a hearing because the City of Logan's employee handbook states that a terminated person has 14 days from receipt of a termination to file a written request for a hearing to appeal their termination. I sent a request for the termination hearing on July 27th. I did not ask for a public hearing. So I sit before the mayor and the council tonight and I ask you to explain to me and to my family why you felt it was necessary to fire me on July 6th because I don't understand. I don't understand how after working diligently for this city for the past nine years, I was fired so suddenly with no reason given.
In response to your question about the timing, there were several points there you asked answers to. There are myriad-ish answers and questions that have been brought up over the past weeks about how we got here, how this was brought about, why the timing of it. Many of those things are contained in the documents, the emails that you provided with communications between you and our city attorney at the time, Joe Lauterbach. The information therein was, as I stated at the time of that meeting, very concerning to me. I had prior reservations on certain issues that were going on. I had suspicions. I was hearing things around town. I was hearing things coming back to my family. I was hearing things coming to me about things that were being said, all secondhand, all information that I could not necessarily validate one way or admit the other. Upon receipt of these emails, which again were brought about by a basic inquiry to know why there were charges going on between emails between you and the city attorney that, again, we were not privy to as a council, that I was not receiving personally, but there were, having been on the council almost four years at the time, and numerous communications going on between the city attorney and yourself and Mayor Fetter that would never then be disseminated to me, never come down to the council that I was aware of.
Why would they be?
Pardon?
Why would they be? Why would my private conversations with the city attorney necessarily come to you, a single council member?
As collectively as a council. I've been looking for the information that we're paying for on council, on guidance, on opinion by attorney that we're paying for as citizens of this community to receive this information on matters, everything from pertaining to conflict of interest issues, which I know were asked and discussed with the attorney. None of that counsel, none of that opinion from the attorney was ever passed on. Okay, so we didn't receive any of that. So this was happening. I see these bills over and over. I see emails being charged and so I look to get that information. I find, and I get resistance in asking for them, that they're, again, your private information. Sending them from a city email, working on city time.
But I did hand them over, didn't I?
Eventually, after quite a fight. We can...
Quite a fight?
Well, I can read what you're saying, basically saying you didn't want to give them out, I had to give you a reason, which we had just had two weeks prior, a training meeting saying we didn't have to have a reason, let alone as a council member asking for information that would have been privy to the council and ultimately was.
Was I given your emails between you and Joe as to why you wanted to terminate me?
I'm sorry, I was...
Was I given, or the rest of the council, the emails between you and Joe on June 26th and June 28th regarding terminating me?
What emails on June 26th and 28th?
The ones that we were billed for in July.
You have to be more specific, which emails?
We got a bill from Joe Lauterbach in July regarding emails and correspondence between you and the city attorney on June 26th and June 28th. Prior to you receiving my emails on July 2nd, you sought out legal advice from the city attorney regarding termination of me. Has anybody seen those emails yet?
Yes.
Okay. Who?
I know Nick and Dee has seen them. I will look. I am. No. No. That's my position. I'm on the council.
Do you have another question?
I would like to get a copy of those emails.
We'll get our attorney's opinion on that.
Ask him.
You mean like she did? Is this going to be open to public hearing?
Public hearing.
But each one needs to be asked to wait to be called upon. Angela's will have all the time she wants first and we'll allow other citizens their three minutes to talk to us, to give their comments.
Does any, do Mayor, Councilmember Fauch and Councilmember Crum, do you have any questions for me?
No, you've done a super fine job and I don't know what it's all about. I sworn in on Thursday. I left town and got back last night, so I haven't had a chance to look into the details, but I will.
My name is Brooke Timmer. I'm the attorney representing Ms. Winter. The council has stated that the reason for firing Ms. Winter was insubordination. Can you explain to me how you feel she was insubordinate?
Yes, I would. Yeah, I would be glad to. Again, pertaining to the information that's in these and we have not discussed prior to this meeting how much of this we'd like to share, I would like to go through it. Is there any that we want to, or is there an approach that you finalized after reviewing them, how you want to disseminate this information? Do we want to have folks come in and review it or?
Well, there are certain Freedom of Information Act requests that need to be fulfilled. Other than that, is there a need?
I can't hear you.
Would you ask for it now? Could you hear me? Give it my mic.
I can't hear it.
Not at the tail end when people are speaking up at the...
Who is addressing you?
My name's Aaron Rodenberg. I recently contacted the city attorney. It's nice to be here tonight.
Welcome.
We have a beautiful town. I always drive through it, it's very nice. My response was that there are Freedom of Information Act requests that are outstanding and that some have been fulfilled and some haven't, pending my opinion, which, as you can imagine, I have a lot to digest before I can give my opinion. Would you give me that? So I don't know that I can give an answer to Mr. Johnson's question right now as to whether or not that document should be provided right now or just pursuant to Freedom of Information Act request. However, the claimant, Ms. Winter, generated that document and she has it. So as far as the council's dissemination of it right now at this public hearing, I think we should reserve comment on that for a later date, that I can give a formal opinion, which I have not been asked to give until now. And I needed some time to research that. Would you give me that?
Did any of our council contact you prior to this meeting?
So if that is an answer to your question, that's my response.
Thanks, Aaron.
Going back to my question though, I want to make sure I'm clear. First of all, you kind of allege in a very broad manner that there are multiple emails. How many emails do you contend that she sent and are these the basis for your contention that she was fired for insubordination?
They are the basis for the insubordination, yes.
How many emails are you alleging?
There were numerous that she provided. I asked for a timeframe, I think from the first of the year on. There were a couple of them in particular that have been provided to Aaron that are the ones in question.
And specifically which?
You have, the two that you have.
Okay. And?
Again, I provided those. My fellow council members that have others and may have looked at different ones and seen things differently are able to provide those to Aaron as well for review. Those are the ones that I specifically provided.
Okay. And I have seen and read those and I'm asking you specifically, what is contained in those emails that you allege my client was insubordinate for?
Her general disregard for the council.
So just my opinion?
There are several things and again, without going through them specifically and bringing them up and name by name the votes that are in them and regarded in them, I am not going to comment until attorney gives us an opinion. We could have that opinion all along.
We need to keep this with the council and Ms. Winter, please.
I want to make sure I'm clear. You allege my client was fired for insubordination, but you are refusing to give exact examples of how she was insubordinate. Am I getting that correct?
Not refusing. No, you're not.
Then answer the question.
The question primarily is obtained in the writings that you have, the emails that Ms. Winter wrote between her and the attorney. It's there. You have it.
You're right. I've read them and they seem like a concerned administrator, city administrator contacting county attorney, asking about things that the council is doing. Do you disagree?
Yes.
And asking for guidance from the city attorney as to what can be done.
Yes, I do. I disagree fundamentally with that opinion.
And is there any reason the city council has not released them to the city citizens so that they can make their own determination?
Say the last part again.
Is there any reason that the city council has not released these emails to the citizens of Logan so that they can make their own determination?
Yeah. We've not had a city attorney review them until very recently.
Mr. Rodenberg, if I heard you correctly, are you saying that Ms. Winter can release them since she was part of the conversations that these emails contain?
Hi, my name is Aaron Rodenberg and I will not be answering any questions from the public, I'm sorry. My servant has to be counsel. I am here to protect the citizens and the citizens' monetary funds.
And Mr., I understand you won't be answering any questions, but I heard you say just a few minutes ago that she drafted them or wrote them, which I think seemed to insinuate to citizens that she may have something to hide and I want to make it clear that she has nothing. So are you telling me that she cannot release them?
There's no insinuation there. I'm sorry that you took it that way.
So is Ms. Winter free to disseminate these emails?
They're her emails.
Okay.
They're her emails.
Thank you. And again, Mr. Johnson, will you give me specific examples of insubordination that you allege from these two emails?
Not till our attorney says that we can share that.
Okay. And I want to be clear, that's the only basis for firing Ms. Winter? Are there any other bases under which the council or the City of Logan contends Ms. Winter was fired besides these two emails?
Those were the documents that were provided. Those were documents that were presented and provided, which underscored many of the complaints and concerns that we had leading up to that. I would not say that that is 100% inclusive of every concern that I, as a sole council member, had regarding Ms. Winter's performance as a city clerk in Logan.
So can you tell me what those concerns were? Because those concerns were never conveyed to me.
I would, you know, disagree with that.
On what basis? Have you ever come into my office and had a personnel meeting with me?
Not a personnel meeting.
You're on the Personnel Committee, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I've not had that, you know, that formal meeting with you. Any discussions I've had with you have been in this building though.
In a council meeting.
Or in your office or in your area.
Specifically when?
Particularly when I came in to review the tapes.
Do you mean on March 21st, I believe it was, when you and your wife came in and attacked me?
That's your side of the story, but if that's the date...
As was the deputy clerk and the police chief who listened to it all.
Again, that's your opinion.
Okay. Are you aware of Article III and the disciplinary actions that are set out as to reprimand an employee who you believe is acting outside the bounds of their employment?
In employee handbook?
Yes.
City of Logan's employee handbook? Familiar with it, yes.
Can you explain to me why you felt that Angela's actions warranted immediate dismissal rather than speaking to an employee who had put in nine years with the city?
In particular because I believe there was efforts to, again, based on these emails, there were efforts that some information would be possibly released that shouldn't have been, confidential information. Again, without being able to give you specifics, that there would be retaliation possibly used with this information. That was one of my reasons for basically calling the special meeting.
So it's no longer insubordination now? You're changing the reasons for why she was fired?
Nope. Insubordination is the reason given.
And again, you're unwilling to give me a specific example from the emails tonight?
Yes.
As part of the hearing tonight, Ms. Winter would also ask to be reinstated to her position as administrator.
I have always tried to speak up on behalf of our citizens and for the welfare of our wonderful town and community. Because I did so, I was fired. It was very difficult to recommend to the council such measures as deemed necessary or expedient for the good government and welfare of the city as per the city administrator ordinance, when the council no longer listened to my recommendations, did not care about the good government and welfare of the city. It was my job to protect the City of Logan to the best of my ability in it. It was my duty to report to the mayor and to the city attorney when the welfare of the city was in danger. It was my duty to tell the citizens who were complaining about council members where to turn for help when they asked. I did not call the state ombudsman's office and file a complaint about Logan's city council. The citizens did. Let's give them a little bit of credit here. They're not a bunch of income poops and weirdos. They are longtime, upstanding residents, many of whom have served in your very seats. They know what it takes to effectively run a city government because they have done it themselves. They have continued to be appalled at your behavior and I had nothing to do with inciting this collective belief other than to encourage the citizens of Logan to simply attend city council meetings. I was simply doing my job. I believe I was retaliated against simply because I was in favor of restoring Millamette Park and I was not as afraid to speak out in favor of the park. The last time I checked, it was not a crime to have an opinion. It was not a crime to exercise my right of free speech. It was not a crime to report illegal and unethical behavior by those who took an oath to protect the citizens of Logan. It was my duty. The attack you have waged on my character, my job performance, and my morals is inexcusable. And just so we're clear, the definition of insubordination is disobedient to authority. How, where, and specifically when was I disobedient to authority? Was I told not to email the city attorney? I copied the mayor on many of my emails to Joe since the mayor was often the one who instructed me to call the attorney. Did the mayor tell me I was not to contact the attorney and therefore I was disobeying the mayor?
Why did the attorney ask you then to pick up the phone? To stop writing emails?
That was his preference of how to communicate.
In the attitude in which you did in these emails, that if you share them, if we agree to share them...
I will share them.
They will see them. They will be able to make up their own minds about it.
You are correct. Am I allowed to read the emails out loud?
It's your public hearing if you would like to, yes.
Don't you have any questions for me?
I'm going to sit if that's okay. The first email in question is dated April 5th. Again, I sent this to Randy Fetter, mayor. This is one of the emails in question, correct? The one from April 5th, addressed to Randy and Joe.
What's the top of the page?
It starts out, "Hi Randy and Joe." So I need to recap the events and decisions regarding the minutes. So I need to recap the events and decisions regarding the minutes. Okay. And this was to, from me, to Mayor Fetter and Joe Lauterbach. So I need to recap the events and decisions regarding the minutes so that I can be directed by one or both of you how to proceed with getting the minutes published timely and legally. This has been very stressful for Marilyn as she has caught in the middle, as she is the one that has been working on them the most. To recap, the minutes from March 12th meeting were published in the paper but not approved at the March 26th meeting because Councilmember Johnson did not approve of them. Marilyn emailed twice asking for the council's input on how they should be changed so that they get approved at a meeting. She heard back from Randy and Councilmember Crum that they were fine the way they were. Councilmember Johnson replied, "My recommendation is to present the minutes with just the information required. Doing anything otherwise runs the risk of being in editorial. The only other option would be to provide a complete transcript and I don't believe we want to start down that road nor pay for the publishing. If my other council members wish to discuss their thoughts, please give me a call." So apparently his opinion is that we don't need anything other than motions, resolutions, and ordinances, none of the discussion. This is a departure from how they have been done for as far back as I can find. It is my opinion that we, that if we, as a city, want to change the way the minutes, we present the minutes in the newspaper, this should be voted upon by the entire council. Until then, I think we should continue doing them as we have for over 100 years. One council member should not dictate, outside of a council meeting no less, how policy has changed. After the minutes from the 12th were published, he stated in a meeting that he felt they should be more of a, and then for some reason I drift off there. "The minutes from March 26th were done, sent to the council and mayor on Friday morning and sent to the newspaper at noon their deadline. They were to be published April 4th. Councilmember Johnson called the newspaper editor Saturday at 2:00 and told her to pull the minutes. The editor called the mayor and he said the minutes should be withheld pending council discussion. This was not discussed at the April 2nd special council meeting. Now they won't be discussed until April 9th. So that means they won't get published until April 18th, eight days late. If they are sent to the newspaper this week, they will be one day late. Now we have a special meeting on April 2nd that also needs to go to the newspaper by 12:00 tomorrow in order to be published in time. I've had two phone calls and one citizen stop in to ask why the minutes were not in this week's paper. The webmaster for the city's website emailed me to tell me that people are emailing and calling her, asking why the minutes are not on the city's website. Councilmember Johnson also instructed me, 'These minutes have not been approved by the city council. They are not to be published until they have. The mayor does not approve the minutes, the council does. They should not be put on the city website until they have been approved. You are correct. We are only required to publish the motions, ordinances, and resolutions if the timing of the minutes is an issue,' dot, dot, dot. Through my phone calls to the Iowa League of Cities, Joe Lauterbach, and research in The Code, The Cityscape magazine, talking to Susie Bonham, county auditor, it is my belief that I am the one legally charged with printing the minutes timely. I can be charged with a misdemeanor, it states. Although I am not concerned with being charged with this due to the circumstances of how they were not published, the citizens should know what is happening. According to The Cityscape Q&amp;A from February 2009, it states, 'Question, who is required to sign and approve the minutes? Answer, the minutes must be signed by the individual preparing them, whether this is the city clerk, deputy clerk, or another person authorized to take the minutes. Although a majority of mayors co-sign or attest the minutes, there is no legal requirement to do so. However, it is common for auditors to note whether the mayor has signed the minutes. In addition, a majority of councils act to approve their minutes even though there is no legal requirement to do so. At the time the minutes are considered for approval, the city council has the authority to amend the minutes to make corrections, changes, or deletions.' So what to do? If I ask the council, I am sure I will be instructed by Councilmember Johnson not to print any minutes until they have been approved, until they have approved them, or to only print what is legally required, which would not include any discussion. I would be okay with the council making a motion to change the way the minutes are printed in the newspaper as this would save the city money. However, I think the normal minutes should be on the city's website so that the citizens know what is happening at meetings and what is happening in Logan. Please advise me so that I do the right and legal thing, but don't get fired by a council that has been bought off by one angry member. Thanks, Angela."
So now that the email has been read, Mr. Johnson, can you tell me what in that email you indicate or believe that Ms. Winter was insubordinate about?
She makes comments in there about one council member should not dictate outside a council meeting no less how policy has changed. It also relates to how I'm an angry council member and bought off the other council members in the email.
It's my opinion.
I know. Again, in context with the other emails...
Folks in the audience, please quiet down so we can keep this public hearing on track. Thank you.
You didn't think it sounded like a concerned city administrator contacting the city attorney as to how to handle the minutes?
Okay. The other one that was used, I believe, starts on Tuesday, May 15th regarding videotaping council meetings. Is that correct?
Correct.
So this is dated Tuesday, May 15th. It was to city attorney Joe Lauterbach regarding videotaping council meetings.
Which day is it?
Tuesday, May 15th is when the conversation started.
You got more there?
"Hi Joe, I know there is no law against someone video or audio taping a council meeting. The council has continued to disregard the advice of both you and the ombudsman's office in their behavior. At the last meeting, several citizens in the audience later commented that Nick, Skip, and Dee were writing notes and passing them between them, and also typing things into their cellphones, passing them to be read, then winking and nodding, and then speaking, like Nick had to be told what to say by Skip. I asked Angela McBride, ombudsman's office, about this. Here was her reply. Angela, first of all, I believe this is highly unprofessional, but I am not aware of any court cases or Attorney General opinions that directly answer your question. Could be argued that the notes are public record, but there probably isn't a lot of argument that those notes are something that is required to be retained. The content of those notes would determine whether a majority were violating the open meetings law. If it was determined that they were deliberating or discussing anything under their purview, it may be considered a violation of the open meetings law. A member of the public may wish to videotape the meetings, or the city can videotape them. I believe a videotape is a good deterrent to that type of behavior. Let me know if you need anything else. As always, this is not considered legal advice, and I am not an attorney. Angie. My question is this: Can the videotape of the meetings be played on the local access channel without the approval of the council? Can Randy say he thinks it would be a good idea, and then we do it? I think I can arrange someone to tape them. I see that Dennison puts the audio recordings of their meetings on their city website. The difference here is that four members of the council are the ones with things to hide. If they vote no on this, then it may not happen. That's not to say that a citizen can't tape it and then show it at his own house, or perhaps movies in the park, but the local access would be a better deterrent to this poor behavior, I believe. They continue to refuse to approve the council minutes because they are never satisfied with their contents. Nick sent me a long email yesterday, asking yet again, 'Who decides what gets put into the minutes? This has been a recurring theme, and it is getting very tiresome to both Randy and I. We have spent hours discussing this at the past three or four meetings. They just don't get that I am the one who has been trained to do the minutes, and I am taking the advice of the Iowa League of Cities on how to do them. The problem is, they sound so stupid, they just can't seem to understand that if you say stupid things, people will hear and read those stupid things. Last Friday, I was gone for the afternoon, and I received a call from Marilyn telling me that a concerned citizen called OSHA on an electrician who was volunteering his labor to run electrical to the new park shelter. Elmer was here, and went and inspected and took pictures and reported back to the OSHA office what he found. First of all, come to find out, OSHA doesn't generally apply to volunteers. Secondly, all of the claims were baseless. We all know without a doubt who called OSHA. It was one of four people. Any concerned citizen would have called City Hall, or found a city worker, or something quicker to remedy the presumed hazard than to go home and Google OSHA, and call Des Moines, and possibly wait four to eight hours for them to investigate. Nick LaFieber has insisted to me more than once that we need an engineer to oversee this park shelter project. I have explained to him repeatedly that an $11,000 slab of concrete, six poles, and a roof does not need an engineer, when we have about 150 years of combined construction experience volunteering to build this thing. He used to work for Peter Kewitt, back when he held jobs, and would have the knowledge of how to call OSHA. This is the type of stuff that is going on daily. I won't bore you with more, but let's just say, it is wearing down the city employees. Marilyn and Elmer are both real close to throwing in the towel. Elmer has wanted to retire for months, but has stayed until we get new officers hired. Now he wants to stay because Skip Johnson wants his son hired, and Elmer does not want to see that happen. Skip is on the police committee, as is Wes Grieve, and I assure you that is their plan. Marilyn has been informally offered a job for more money and much less stress. Why wouldn't she take it? We are being attacked at every meeting, and we are not allowed to even defend ourselves. Seriously, who would want this job? Let me know what you think about the taping and subsequent replaying on the access channel. Then pray for our sanity. So Joe replied, "I'm sorry things are not seeming to work well at City Hall these days. Open meetings can be videotaped and/or broadcast by anyone. The decision of whether or not the city should videotape the meetings is clearly the council's decision, but that would not prevent the local media or somebody else from turning on the camera. The taped CD or whatever holds the recording is the property of the person or entity that recorded the meeting. That person or entity can do with it what they will. Hope this answers your questions. Again, the league is a great source of information on these topics, and I would defer to their expertise in most situations." I replied, "Well, Wes Grieve came in yesterday after I sent this and is resigning Monday night. He said he is in favor of recording and playing on local access. Then perhaps we could limit the amount of discussion in the minutes, in the citizens' comments portion, and save a little on publishing, and yet the public would still have access to what is being said by watching the proceedings. I will check with Randy to see if he wants this as an agenda item to decide on airing it." Joe replied, "You are still required to publish the minutes. I'm sure you know that broadcasting the video will not satisfy that requirement." I replied, "Yes, I do realize that. I was just thinking that maybe we could cut down on the amount of information that is put into the citizens' questions and comments portion of the minutes, since those are not action items anyhow. If it is broadcast on local access, people would have access to all their comments. Wes was at the meeting Monday night, but Johnson, Clark, and LaFieber skipped town, literally, and did not show up, so we did not have a quorum to conduct business. So Wes's resignation was not formally accepted. He's still intense on being done, though, and they will have to accept it at the next council meeting. Don't think it is something that needs to be formally accepted to be legal, but I will put it on next Tuesday's agenda anyhow. So now we have to have another meeting Tuesday to conduct all the business of the meeting that wasn't. We had 23 agenda items, six of them resolutions, and they waited until last Friday to tell me they would not be there. Two of them went on week-long vacations, and they didn't know they were going to be gone a week when they set the date for the public hearing to amend the budget a few weeks ago? Right. Can't wait until they have been trained, so they can start actually being punished when they do illegal, unprofessional, and unethical things after being trained. We will most likely need a special election soon, as I'm sure they will not appoint anyone who has common sense about this whole park issue. If they refuse to appoint someone, then I assume we have to hold a special election. It says they have 40 days to appoint, but there is no penalty for not appointing. So if 40 days comes and goes, do the citizens petition for a special election? You don't have to research this. I will call the league once I see what their intentions are, or if we get to a point where they refuse to appoint someone. If they appoint one of their own, the citizens are ready to file the petition for an election. There has been talk that Clark may resign too, so hopefully, if she does, it is within the same timeframe as Wes, and both seats can be appointed or filled by election at the same time. January 1st of 2014 can't come soon enough. That will be when Johnson has been removed from office."
Are there any other emails that you allege she was insubordinate?
Other emails, no. No, just documents that I want to turn in.
And again, we would restate our request to have Angela Winter reinstated as city administrator.
As we are still in the public hearing, this is also a chance for any citizens of the nation to comment.
Prior to that, Randy, I'd like to comment on some of the items that were on here since they're out now. In the letter that you just read, closing remarks, you comment that how we didn't show up and we didn't have a quorum to conduct business, and that you didn't realize that, for one, personally, I don't know, I can't speak for Nick being gone on his vacation, that you didn't know about our vacation plans.
I did not know that you were going on vacation.
That we had shared with you for three months prior to that, I believe, at least a couple months.
Your wife told me you were going to be going on vacation soon, and she wanted people to know, because you had a dog sitter. And if your dog got loose, she didn't want your dog to wind up at the Humane Society and not get back to you. I did not ever have a date specifically of when you were going on vacation, or I would not have set the date for the public hearing during your vacation.
I don't believe that to be true. I know you had the date because you shared it, and there are witnesses that you shared that date in an illegal meeting.
Who?
In a car seat.
I did not tell Renee.
Hold on. Can you have a second?
Specific date was mentioned. The very specific date of our vacation.
That is Renee's word against mine, Skip.
I take Angela's, I was at that meeting.
I was too.
Folks, please, this meeting right now is stealing Angela's court, so we need to respect her ability to speak.
So the comments regarding being gone and skipping town were clearly fabricated.
How's that insubordination?
And in the comments, also, you talked about how if we were able to appoint our own, citizens are ready to file a petition for election, and how you're hopeful that Councilmember Clark will also resign as Wes Clark.
In the same timeframe. I said, hopefully, it is within the same timeframe, so that we only have the cost of one election.
I understand that.
I did not say, hopefully, Councilmember Clark will resign.
Clearly, you couldn't wait for my removal from council. I believe there was personal feelings for writing that, and that you had an agenda which you were pushing.
Again, I was talking to the city attorney, not to the newspaper editor, not to the town. I was talking to the person whose job it is to help me effectively run the city and protect the city.
I can see that you clearly were venting to the attorney, which was, in turn, we were paying for.
That was my right to free speech.
You paid for that. You also commented on the prior note, the councils continue to disregard both the advice of both the ombudsman's office in their behavior. You, meaning Joe, and I assume you're talking about the letter that he wrote us.
Joe issued a legal opinion, which was part of the deal to drop the investigation of you by the ombudsman's office.
Correct.
If the city attorney issued a legal opinion of what should be done regarding the four specific complaints by the citizens, then if the city attorney effectively answered each of those four complaints with a solution, the ombudsman's office would drop the investigation of you. Joe gave an opinion that stated that you needed to be trained, and that once you were trained, if you continued to make the same types of mistakes and errors in judgment that you had been making, be prepared to be mired down in litigation.
Correct.
Now, I'm paraphrasing, but that was the gist of the conversation, correct?
Yeah, I'm not disputing that, I'm not arguing that. I believe that many of Joe's opinion was one-sided. He never came and talked to any of the council members.
But you had several conversations with him, just as you did with the ombudsman.
No. I had no conversation with Joe before writing that opinion. Okay? He wrote that opinion without talking to me, and I believe he also didn't talk to any of the other council members.
What are you, God?
So many of these allegations and behaviors that you were referring to, that were unethical, illegal, and so forth, were not. They didn't happen. Hey, there were many lies in there.
That is not the belief of the citizens of Logan.
They've been printed in the paper. They've been disseminated by, believe, you and others.
No, they have not.
Okay? They've been propagated left and right to disparage our reputation, to make those things true.
Quiet down, please. I know you'd all like to stay for the whole meeting, and we need to get through this, so please allow... I will give you time, you're a couple minutes, three minutes to speak, but right now, there is...
Can you understand that I had nothing to gain by going to the city attorney with my concerns about how city business was or was not being conducted, other than to protect the welfare of the city? I had nothing to gain.
That's the question, Angela. Why were you having these kind of conversations on the city dime?
Because of how you were behaving.
Why was this... Because of your interpretation of how we were behaving.
Because we started... After three months of being treated the way I was treated, I was frustrated, as was all of the people that, meeting after meeting after meeting, attended and saw nothing being done. They were frustrated. They would come into my office and vent their frustrations. I, as the city administrator, it is my job to take those complaints, to take that frustration, and do with it what I see fit, whether that's forward it to the mayor, forward it to the council, forward it to the attorney. But when those complaints were specifically about you, obviously, I was not going to come directly to you first. I went to the people whose job it is to protect the city that are above me, and that was Mayor Fetter, whom I went to many times. There were many times when I said to Randy, "When is somebody going to stand up for me?" When I get screamed at in a council meeting, and then I try to defend myself, and Councilmember Clark tells me to shut up, who was going to defend me? Nobody defended me ever against all of your behavior. Why? Do we not say in our employee handbook that we should be free to work here?
I'm sorry, you felt that.
And not be harassed?
Very personally. Clearly, you did. Clearly, you took it very personally.
Why do you think we are making money? So many people came to our council meetings. They came to our council meetings to help protect me. They saw what you were doing to me, and they were there to keep an eye on you, to make sure. We have never in the history of Logan had more than five citizens at a council meeting, other than if there was a bond vote, or something of big importance coming up. Yet we consistently have anywhere between 100 and 200 citizens now. Why is that? Because they are watching you.